They're six and a half inches thick. And they will go up just like the domino set. And that, they say, only takes maybe three or four days. You know, from talking to manufacturers and the people that are doing it. So it's extremely strong system and extremely insulated because it's a very dense building system.
And it works because it's lightweight.
And how does the piping and the electrical work?
Carefully. The piping is all done, if you look at the drawings, everything goes back into those toilet rooms. And all of them are handled there, near where we can do that. Everything's, the only plumbing you have is the kitchen sink. And it's on that wall too, so we can back up to it. The electrical, they pre-drill it so you can put it in. Or you can just simply put it into a base system. Or, there's three or four ways that you can do the electrical. It's less complicated. But the structural integrated system, or the SIP as they call them, we're looking forward to doing that. And I will let you know that, and I've shown it on the drawings, this is not a cute house like I usually do. You know, old and funky looking. This will be a little more contemporary, as you can see in the drawings. It'll, we'll use a lot of corrugated metal because it's lightweight. And so we'll be able to put that right on those home panels, follow them.
You mentioned, so the staffs renting on a monthly basis, what months of the year do you imagine staff will be renting?
Well, for sure, it'll be, well, I've got quite a few that are annual already. I've got four that I can fill right now. But our, we start staffing in April for the summer. And the way our business is tracking right now, it's starting to slow down in October. But our numbers are still quite high in October where we're at. So I think it's November to April is really the slow time.
So staff would be in there for a minimum of probably seven months a year.
Six, six to seven, yeah.
And you said that some of them, the staff would be opting for being there full-time?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if you, it seems that the only other alternative that you talked about is transient contractors coming over, building contractors, I presume is what you're talking about. Have you considered any other form of rental?
I think the problem is, unfortunately, the way the rentals are in the contract is so not even beneficial. You can't get out of a rental contract in this day and age in the city of Vancouver. And it's pretty hard to rent because you can't get people out.
That's why you see, the problem is derived from that. No one talks about it. But as an example, Seattle has probably 80% rental units and 20% condos. Well, in DC, they have 80% condos and 20% rentals. And that's simply because of the laws, no one wants to rent because they can't get rid of a bad tenant under the existing laws. That's why we wouldn't rent them monthly to someone other than an employee, which we can bypass that.
When I was in architecture school, a professor who, when he left architecture school, opened up his architectural practice on a floating, on a barge. And there was a kind of unintended and unhappy consequence of that where about 90% of his clients got seasick.
It's always a question, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
His professor opened a houseboat business, his architecture thing, but half the clients got sick. Because, you know, yes, there is, there is that.
Yeah, I presume that you'll make your way around that. Any other questions from the commission?
Well, I was thinking, you know, if this were being built on land, there would be some sort of a housing agreement. I can see the situation is somewhat different.
So there is, we, it is, well, Whistler uses the, it's a hotel contract type thing for their employees. So we'll, we'll be emulating with them. I've gotten in contact with and have become friends with the guy who does, who did, he does not now, but ran all the housing authority for employees in Whistler. So it's, and I believe he uses the, there's a hotel tenant contract type thing rather than the apartment landlord tenant agreement.
And we've checked that our rents at 800 would be about what they're getting up there for this. They have some cheaper, but they're cots, they're bunk beds and shared with someone.
Yeah, well, these are individual true units to somebody, which is rare.
Just a financial question here. You say you could put permanent tenants in at least four right away, people who have as employees. What incentive is there going to be for you to keep all these places primary for tenants? At 800 a month, if you could make three or four or 500 dollars a week in corporate.
Because I have to run my business and I can't run.
No, 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 what I mean is, is when the time comes, that you have employees that want a place to stay. What, it's not much financial incentive for you to say, you can stay here for 800 when I'm making 1600 a month.
Well, they don't really, if you charged for a hundred dollars a night for 30 days, yeah, that would be three grand. But you gotta figure out, that you gotta change the linens, you gotta have all the other stuff. So it isn't really that desirous to be running, you know, because you gotta hire two or three more maids.
You gotta, the front house staff that manages it. So if you're charging 100, you're maybe making 50, let's say. But the other part is, it's, we can't, we can't run our business, the other parts of our business, without that. So sometimes you have to just take a bullet, sort of, and so it all works in the end. Because it's not going to survive ongoing businesses.
Let me, let me give you an example. We lease out currently the cottages for our employees to stay in, the ones that are here. And we could be renting them out. Now then, you don't rent the cottages out in winter much, you know. The vacancy rate, our typical rate is like 40, 45% of occupancy a year. And that 40% occurs in the summer, the rest of the year is pretty empty. Not much going on in the winter, other than the contractors.
So accommodation for your employees is only a panic in the summer?
Primarily, that's when we're busiest.
Well, yes and no, though. I've got, as I said, I've got four employees who have worked for us for over two years. And they have changed, the one gal has changed living places six times in the past two years. That's insane. She shipped her family, they all live in Mission, her kids now with her grandmother. We pay enough and we take care of our employees enough, they want to stay with us.
Yeah, so I think this is great. I mean, I love that you're going to be able to provide housing for employees, that's fantastic. And, but so many other businesses are in the same boat. And I can see that you've got, you know, some space there for four or five months or something like that. But the nightly rental, I mean, how useful is that? I'm thinking from the community's perspective and all the other businesses that have people who need places to stay. And it would be great if somehow your surplus space in the winter could be used by, you know, somebody up the road who needs, who needs a trade.
Well, that's right, we can do that, but I, I wonder.
How do we get them out in the summer when we need it?
I know, I get your problem, is you've only got, you need to be able to toss them out in the summer.
Yeah, and we, and granted, we are blessed because Randy and Dorothy had forethought to build this and get enough space and stuff like that. So we're in a unique position rather than having to, and we have thought about going and buying a house and just making it a flop house, to be honest. But that's not beneficial to anybody, to employees' health or the neighbors or, you know, anything like that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a really cool idea and the size, I think, is really appropriate. And it'll be interesting, like, this just happens to float.
Yeah.
But what is wrong with doing something like this on land?
For sure.
Like, so much nicer for people. It's just, it's the, it's the small size that makes it more affordable.
And there's so many parts of the world that are doing it and things happen like this. It's really a cool concept. And that's how I got to that, that idea to do this was.
Is there, does the marina attract any liability, life safety issues that arise out of having a number of tenants full-time living there?
We actually find that our liveaboard tenants make the marina safer. They are there, they see if there's a problem with the boat sinking. They see if there's, you know, weird people or a fire or, you know. We find that we've not had problems with that, it's actually been a benefit to us, the ones that we currently have in the marina. They're very, the marina group is a very conscientious group, so.
The, you'll notice too, from the safety standpoint, we have left a three-foot space on the entryway. We, and we show four-foot doors, or excuse me, two-foot doors opening up to a four-foot opening. We don't, and we'll have a chair or two out there, but we don't expect that to be used as the primary social area that most houseboats would have because we've provided the social area upstairs.
Well, I mean, there are employees, they're not going to screw up or they're not going to be employed, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's why this is, it's critical that it's done that way. The, what else can I tell you about this? How much we want to get going, because we'd like to be able to have one of these by next spring.
Have you presented this concept to the fire department?
Yes, not, not officially. He's seen the fire chief, I've taken him through, and he has no problems with it. I've presented it to Bob, who is the loony sewage guy, and he hasn't said negative or, you know, he thinks it's interesting that we can do that. And that just keeps that much more out of his hair.
So that septic system, does it have to be pumped out eventually here?
It pumps out directly into the water.
Oh, it does, okay, but it never has to be?
It drains out. The, we are installing a pump out that can be hooked up to it at any time.
Oh, okay.
Turn it on full blast. It's just if needed, and they, they say it isn't ever needed.
They do have a tracker record, this will bring, they use them.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
They have them on boats now, too, don't they?
Yep, I believe so. And they use them, I believe, in quite, in Lake Washington, in Lake Washington in Seattle. They have a very large houseboat community and a lot of them use this system.
The, what else can I tell you about? Yeah, if you're interested, but they have a pretty good website.
Yeah, I'll look it up online.
And now you're using for residences too.
Well, I don't, I don't know why more people don't use it for residences, because then you don't.
They're expensive.
Yeah, but it's really a business, way of the field and everything.
I think composting toilet, isn't it like a composting toilet basically? And that's a lead one, so. Little bit, go ahead.
I just got a question about aesthetics. I mean, I like the, you know, the modern look, that's great. And you said it was metal, I see you've got, you know, sort of vertical siding and horizontal siding, so metal.
I think that's referring to the, it's, that's the metal.
Yeah, metal going up and down.
Corrugated, yes. And then maybe sideways, yeah.
We, yeah. Because this is shrunk and we've come up with different, the window patterns may be changed.
Yeah, the metal, yeah, the metal siding, I think, oh, okay. That's aesthetics, that's just me, but whatever.
Unfortunately, that's, we don't get to comment on that.
It's another committee.
Oh, you don't get to comment on that?
No, you're all free.
We can comment, but we can't, we can't put it to a vote.
Okay, so this is, yeah, in terms of, yeah, obviously, it's, we're talking about six to, six floating buildings? So we allow up to three float houses. And you define float houses that have a single, floating thing with a single unit in it. So this would be, we'd probably call it some new definition to say these are floating, you know, called floating buildings.
So we're asking for a reason, changing the bylaw to a total of nine in our marina instead of three.
So, so you'd still have, how I, how I see it, you'd still have three float houses. And then we take it up, six floating buildings, another ex-mot, or something in that.
Whatever phrase you want.
Yeah, but that's how, to increase it. That's essentially the zoning change that we made. And then, yeah, before, after rezoning, there'd be a development permit, which our design panel would look at to sort of inform the character of the buildings themselves. But in terms of for the ABC, specifically the application, to allow this new type of floating building that has more than one dwelling unit in it, and to allow them to have up to six of these buildings with up to 12 units in their zone.
Thank you very much. Dan, did you want to give us any more background?
I know, I was just looking at, you know, the presentation I've given you. And I think, I mean, we've covered almost all of it. This is, this is like a, like a snippet of their zones. It's quite a complicated zone as I go through, but I'm saying, they allow, we allow principal marina public work and then accessories, we allow float houses. We talked about, we're looking at 2% of the marina burst, we allow liveabords to 15. In our zoning, currently, we limit float houses to a total size and a height. The new float house we call, is a building containing a dwelling unit designed to float on water, but it's not intended to be suitable for navigation. And they currently have 115 marina bursts, so they allow up to three float houses in their zone.
But you're now, you're saying, you're contemplating a new definition.
I mean, it started with someone, when we first, when we first, we talked about it, we're looking at buildings that have between two and four units in them. And now we're looking at buildings that have between one and two dwelling units. So I mean, yeah, it's sort of leaving their float house amount alone and then having some sort of floating building, floating something.
Dan, would these plans at all be part of the zoning? Because these, you have a definition of, yeah, up to a certain size. What makes these so special and why we would really jump on board is because they're geared to, that fit the market that's been discussed. So we want that to translate into 85 square meters size units at some point scattered around the marina, which I doubt would ever happen, but that certainly is a big rash amount for approving this right there. And I think they're great. And I think, I think it's just what we need and we hope to see it.
So I think that's great, so just how the float house has, like, has a maximum size and maximum height, whatever we, you know, floating building, could similarly have a maximum size and maximum height that fits closely geared to this? Would maybe some flexibility or, it needs to be a little wider to balance or something?
Because it needs to slide from 16 to 14, or 16 to 14 then.
Yeah, like, yeah, with some cushion, but yeah, we could somehow say, okay, we'd quite like these smaller buildings to be tucked nicely in the marina, and that's what we're permitting.
And the location?
I don't know about the location, the development permit would definitely be addressing location. And that's where it would be, we would say development permit, that can happen in this area. Zoning would be more complicated.
I mean, it makes sense to put them all in that secondary area, I mean, it's close to.
Well, and they're so well protected, it gets, yeah, for sure. This is the place to do it.
And so, yeah, where we are in the process, I was introduced to council last week, since we've come here next week. And then for comments on sort of the initial idea and what we should be regulating, what we should be defining, where we're missing. I'll then draft a bylaw, bring it to council, and then the normal over will come back to the ABC to then look specifically at the bylaws, okay? Based on what we talked about, this is bylaw capture.
I know that this whole process tends to take months and months. And I'm wondering if, if it could sort of be fast-tracked so actually they could start building this thing in a reasonable timeframe, because I'm sort of amazed at how long it takes zoning cases to go through sometimes when they're pretty straightforward. But I know it's all this public hearing and furlough bias and all that sort of thing, if they could sort of overlap somehow.
I think that if we go to public hearing, I'll be a more for yes.
I hope so. I, well, even loony friends will probably be against it.
Cameras.
The loony friends. I think it has a theory on.
Is this actually for a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so it needs zoning change, goes from public hearing.
I think the Al Gore motor is the center.
I think of you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
It's a great concept.
Can I get some of those back, or are they, just the?
I don't know. But, well, he wants, so there's either four, a four-man thing, or a six-man. He says he wants to do a four-man and a three-man. Well, it's only six feet tall, this end, they might, but the bed is really designed to be down here. If you're ready to be one or two. Well, no, this, this design, this would be a small.
Oh, it's a single, okay.
We're just playing with the community. Thank you.
So we're still talking about a maximum of 12?
Yes.
Six buildings in the whole? Because I only saw, I thought, five, I think, so.
Can I ask the commission, is there any other questions or comments about, about the application? I just wanted to consider my own. I, I'd like to see, I don't, there's a pretty strong livability question in my mind about these. I know, it's sort of generally speaking, they sort of feel like they would be okay. The proposal is to reduce them to roughly 140 square feet of living area plus a bathroom. And that there's some stability issues with the change to the aluminum floor.
It's not the change to aluminum floor, it's the change from 14 to 16.
That makes it.
Just a little narrower, is all.
A little narrower, but that's one, yeah, the length, the length also.
Yeah, the length stabilizes it.
It's stabilization.
I don't know if it's clear to everyone from the drawings, but the section doesn't show the whole width of the loft. The loft actually goes three-quarters of the way across the room, right? The ladder goes up sort of through, through the loft floor. So in fact, the proposal is quite a low ceiling through most of that space. I would personally like, I don't care about, the six inches, I think, would make absolutely no difference to the, what you see from the parking lot or from the approach to the ferry. But it will make a huge difference to the livability of those minutes internally. I'd like to see them, that floor ceiling might increase by at least six inches.
Are you talking about the loft?
Loft.
No, I'm talking about the.
The downstairs.
Even 610, which is the minimum?
610, first of all, it's not actually the code minimum. And I think by the time they're actually built with drywall and however else it's proposed to build, those three-quarters plywood and anybody choice and whatever it is, that you'll actually either lose it to the owner or lose it to the other.
I'm all designed for that, all of that in there. And as I said, go down, I can show you one, walk into the bar, enter into the boat house.
So our boat house is built the same.
As the, what they normally, the code minimum was. And then the other one is that you notice that the loft doesn't go.
The way the code reads is that there are some spaces where you can have a contiguous low ceiling height throughout the whole space. But if it's a living room, that's not true. Do you know that?
That, if it's what?
If it's a living room, you can't have a low ceiling through the whole space.
Well, we don't run it the whole space.
I know, you've got, so, 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 yeah. So I just, I don't want to get into an argument about this. I'm suggesting something I think would be an improvement to your project, and I'm not quite sure why you wouldn't do it.
Because then it adds to the height of it.
Edibility.
It goes in stability, because that's why you want to keep everything as low as you can. And, but we did stop the loft near the door, so there's three foot of really height that gives that height ceiling, that feeling of.
Yeah. Because originally, we had these planned at full two-story, bedrooms upstairs, things downstairs. But just because of dynamics of a floating building, which are very different than a house, you have to think about those creepy little things.
So, but in the floating village, Gremble Island, all the buildings were two-story, so.
They're wider bases, probably, or bigger floor, floer.
There, there's one being built now. And it only has, I can't remember, four foot six in its loft, and it's a flat loft. And I just felt that it's better to go up six foot, at least where Guy can get around to get to his desk to sit down, as opposed to trying to get into bed or something, yes.
So it's six foot clear at the top?
Yes, no, at the, at the peak, at the peak. And then it runs down so that where it drops off in an open debuff, it's only like four and a half foot. But, you know, we're.
It's a small space, you can't have everything. It's basically, I mean, ships, boats.
It's way bigger than a boat.
Yeah.
There you go, it's way bigger than a boat, and I've already had inflational and lots of people living on boats, and they love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So Dan was asked for comments on two items, which is on page 545 of the Mando document. The first is regarding the proposed increase to allow for six additional floating buildings containing up to 12 units. Is there a motion regarding that?
I was just, pre-asking you.
I'm asking whoever.
So, recommend that, yeah, we approve, we support.
So there's a movement, there is a motion to support item one, is there a secondary on favor? Opposed, it's carried. And item two, what regulations or conditions should, could be included in an amendment bylaw allowing such a change? Did anything come up for anyone about the proposal that you would see differently or?
I think your suggestion about trying to increase by a few inches the ceiling heights, I mean, to the extent it can be done.
Does anyone believe for a moment that the lofts are for luggage?
Oh, no, it's a bedroom. I mean, they show a bedroom.
But yes, yes, in many municipalities, you cannot have a bedroom upstairs. Maybe Vancouver allows them, but I know that.
Hey, you can't have, you can't have accommodation up there with that staircase.
But even, is it, no, no.
There's exit issues, yeah.
No, the outlaw, Ian's outlaw is building a floating, and they are not allowed to have living space upstairs.
It's, yeah, it's a sleeping loft, and it's a special condition.
But it's, no, but, no, this is a regular, full-on stair case. And what's Queensborough, New West, can't have, they've changed it recently, got all of those lives.
The code doesn't permit you to have a stair like this under any circumstance except going to service space.
Storage, storage space?
Service space. Not even storage space.
Really?
I mean, that's what the limit code is. It's very, very limited. I mean, it doesn't sound as if this structure is going to be subject to building, so, I mean, that's sort of a, I'm going to point. I'm a little bit concerned about the livability of the spaces. It's actually going to feel very, very.
Very short-term, though.
Well, hence.
I don't know, six months to a year, some people.
Yeah, I think there'll, I think there'll be people that stay there all the time. But there's lots, there's people that live on boats all the time. They're not awful, but they love it, so.
And I think, I think the key is that it's for staff. And maybe it should be limited to staff as opposed to rentals, which then you may have elderly people and children and all that who can't really negotiate stairs like that or where those standards really come into play. I mean, if they've got able-bodied staff, that's, that's a special condition. And they, they can avoid the sort of tenancy act issue and all that sort of thing by building that kind of accommodation, that may be a reasonable thing.
And firstly, I was very much of two minds about this. I mean, on the one hand, because. And firstly, I was very much of two minds about this, I was, on the one hand, the conceptual way I liked it, and then on the other hand, this thing is that, even the way it was presented, oh, these are party people, they're going to become down here for. Well, let's get as many party people as we can on this kind of interstitial zone between the plenty yachts and the land, and let's have a big party there every night for the, you know, for the six months.
They monitor that.
There isn't room, and plus, they have, their income is from people on boats, they get a lot of income from people on boats in the summer, and it is not, they will not allow us to screw up their, their mortgage. So that's like, it's, I think it's very, it's very different than building staff, staff housing remote from your business. This is so intertwined that I think there's just huge controls on the whole thing.
Yeah, and I don't think that they could have pure staff housing, because they can't afford to do it. You know, that's the bottom line, it's just like affordable housing, nobody can afford to build affordable housing. So they have to have some rental of those units to make it pay.
And if Hydro wants to.
If they're just renting the staff full-time, they're, they're making a hundred and sixty grand a year for rooms.
Minus costs.
Well, we're.
Electricity, and wifi, and cable, and all of that.
Well, that's a question, I think it's kind of interesting, it's kind of, they're getting smaller and smaller, they charge eight, it would be eight hundred dollars a month for rent, and if there are, you know, what, sixteen of them?
Yeah, twelve.
Twelve, so they're, they're making thirteen grand a month, though. From their staff.
Yeah, if I was a server at Docs, I don't think I could afford to pay any of them. Of course, it'd be two of them, but I probably know they couldn't be two of them in a unit.
Sure.
I don't need to hear that, where do they sleep?
Upstairs.
Hammocks on the stairs.
Upstairs.
Upstairs, yeah.
Full-out or Murphy baths?
I mean, the economics aside, I guess.
Like a dorm.
The, I'm a little bit concerned about the livability, but, you know, maybe if you're, you know, if you're staff, and you're working nights anyway, it's, you know, whatever.
Yeah, that's right. You can crash.
There is a, there's a background concern line, which, you know, the color isn't recovered, and various other things. I think I'd like to see this referred to the fire department.
So it is referred to the fire department as part of our internal?
Right.
Whether or not after, you know, our initial referral, I need to do follow-up, it's always worth doing to highlight stuff, but, but it is referred initially, yeah.
You know, I'd like to hear if they've got a recommendation, for instance, about sprinkler release nets, which might be really small.
There's got to be a code for these.
So they are, like, we do require building permits.
Yeah, okay.
For, so like, the one that went in.
Yeah, Dennis.
Yeah, I mean, we eventually, yeah, got a building permit application for it. If they're built off island and brought in, then it's different. So if he builds them in West Ham, and they float in, then we require it's like to, like, people move houses here, and they get a permit to move a house, but not, you know, we don't expect it, and stuff, right?
So they'll build it on, they'll go elsewhere.
I don't want them to see, to become Airbnb's.
No, I don't want Airbnb.
No, I don't either, I think that's a concern.
But I don't know, I, you know, we have, don't seem to have any jurisdiction over that anyways.
Well, I think it was a suggestion.
I mean, it's just a housing agreement, because that's exactly my, would be my concern too, is that it not be, sort of, that some sort of housing agreement that says, okay, it has to be rented on a monthly basis, or, and even if it's, you know, monthly basis, for, what do they say, for May to October? For six months of the year, it has to be rented monthly. That at least takes away the temptation to say, now they're all just, because that would be your highest market for Airbnb's too, right? It's like, July, August, that's when you want to do it, and you said, okay, well, in the summer, it has to be.
Can those, can those kind of parameters be built into the housing agreement?
So they can for a housing agreement, for sure, I mean, what I haven't told, sort of, Rondi was bringing up, is thought about, okay, well, how does that change, like, on sea? But I would imagine it's the same, like, we do them on land for buildings, and you do them for units and stuff, and I'd imagine.
Yeah, if we can't force them, if we can't force them to building permit up, we force.
We can force a building permit.
If they're built here.
If they're built here.
Yeah.
And if they float in here from Mosquito Creek?
Yeah.
Then nobody has jurisdiction over how they're built, or how they're used.
So when we, yeah, when a house moves here, we get a sign-off from it from before. So, I mean, if they're built off, they're like prefab stuff, then obviously whoever builds them certifies.
They have to be built under CSA Z two-four, yeah.
And if it's an existing house, I think we just get, like, engineer report that they're stable, and then when they move, that they're stable. Somebody who's like an old house, right, so it's not to current code, we don't make them upgraded to current code, we make them do like life and safety, something.
I would take pretty seriously Rondi's offer to put an outboard motor on them to call them boats.
Right.
Because.
To go around, do the runaround all of that.
Yeah.
Sorry, David, you.
Well, I know, I was concerned about the fact that financially, he's better off to make it into Airbnb than he is to accommodate his staff. What I don't understand is that he's only talking about possibility of four of his staff wanting to use it. Now, eight hundred dollars a month is, is.
He's got four, he said they have four.
Right now.
Right now.
They would.
Code circuiting, they're code circuiting.
Even, yeah.
Well, as long, as long as intent is followed, that it's for staff primarily, I don't, I personally think it's a great idea. I know personally, and my collection of friends are pretty old and established with houses, but I've got a lot of people I know that are either moving off the island, or going to have to move, because they can't find anything.
Right.
Well, you saw what happened to the service industry this summer, like, they said they were closed on Thursday, they closed early, and they just had no staff. The golf course was closed all summer, no staff. You know, this is, this is what's happening.
Do we want to see if Daniel can find a way to attach a housing agreement to this concept, or?
I think so, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, that makes sense, yeah.